And we will be getting going shortly, we have our audio video class that is broadcasting this live. Again, this is a unique student experience for which I have the honor to introduce then our President of Cincinnati State, Dr. Monica Posey, to provide some welcome remarks and cheer as we look at this next step in our civic engagement here in the city of Cincinnati. Dr. Posey, please.
Thank you everyone and welcome both those who are here on campus and everyone that is here virtually and all the future people who will see this videotape. We're excited today at Cincinnati State, we're in our fall semester, we have plenty of activity. The students are doing well, engaged, and just moving forward. And we certainly appreciate all the support from the city, all the city leaders to help Cincinnati achieve its mission. Again, we're thanking our student government and also the BMI, which is our Blackmail Initiative, our leader there, Brian Dell, and others from that group. We have another leader, Jill Brill, from BMI. And we'll have from student government, Jappy Kerr will be coming in to moderate. Again, our students in the back from audio video, Christopher Johnson also from BMI alumni, and Elliot Ruther and all his team. So we're happy to be here today. One, because we want to learn more and know about our city. And we appreciate the candidates willing to come and share and tell us what they're thinking, what they can do, but also what we can do for our city. And then we also are really happy because this event is about a collaboration between the student government, BMI, and our academic class in audio video production. So it's a good day, a good event, and thank you. We don't want to waste too much time, so we're going to move ahead. I'll tell you a few of the ground rules and we'll get started. We want each candidate to provide opening and closing statements of about two minutes. We have really student-based questions. and closing statements of about two minutes. We have really student-based questions. Take about 60 seconds to answer the questions, and I think we're going to have a timer. Is that correct? And we'll give you an idea when we're out of time. And then we want to also respect, as we wrap up, the audience and the candidates each other. So we're going to ask each candidate to come and give us an opening statement. Introduce yourself, tell about the Cincinnati community and what and how we can connect as a college. Thank you. Two minutes each.
Thank you, Dr. Posey. Jabril, sitting here, who has the paddle, will show you with the red that there's 15 seconds to go, and then when he turns the side to black, that'll be the time's up. As we await for our SGA president to begin, if we could just, maybe we'll just start on the end with Councilmember Harris. If you could provide an opening statement for the first two minutes, and we'll go down the line. Thanks so much, Councilmember Harris.
Sure. Great. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Reggie Harris, current Cincinnati City Councilmember, Chair Budget and Finance. It has been my great privilege and honor to serve the city of Cincinnati for this past two years, and I look forward to being reelected and serving again. The real focus of my office, with the complete support of my colleagues and the administration, has been thinking about how do we increase our housing supply along all economic levels, from affordable housing to market rate housing, from bringing amenities to communities, grocery stores and coffee shops, et cetera. And the reason why this is important is because for our city to thrive and to grow, for our city to thrive, we need to grow. When a city is not growing, it's shrinking. When it's shrinking, it is dying. And Cincinnati has seen some growth over the past decade, and we want to capitalize on that. So that means reducing regulatory barriers to building housing. Regulatory barriers add to the cost of housing, and it limits the supply. We've seen drastically increasing rent prices in our city, and that's large in part due to low supply of housing. And so one of our key tools to combat that is increasing housing supply. But we've also focused on the lived experience of our citizens, fellow brothers and sisters of Cincinnati. And so we think about our nondiscrimination code and increasing those protections, making sure that we are a welcoming and inclusive city. And finally, I would say that, you know, with the support and the leadership of my colleague, Councilmember Kramer Dean, we've had a real focus on our budget and thinking about a budget of the 21st century, a budget that propels us forward, that allows us to fill much-needed deficits, but also invest in things that allow us to grow. So with that, thank you. Look forward to our conversation.
Don't touch it. Good afternoon. My name is Seth Walsh, a member of City Council. In December of this last year, I was appointed by Councilmember Harris to fill Greg Landsman's unexpired term after he was elected to Congress. I was appointed to the seat because of the work I was doing in College Hill right up the street here on Hamilton Avenue. If you're familiar with it, over the last seven years while I was working as the Executive Director, we led over $85 million in development. That development wasn't just bringing new to College Hill, it was also investing in those who were already living in College Hill. It was investing in the businesses that had made it home for the last 20-plus years and helping them stay a part of the community as we progressed and moved forward. This morning, I even had the honor to be able to go out there as they did a ribbon-cutting on one of the buildings we began, where we created 14 new affordable housing units in a former bowling alley, which frankly, I thought was one of the coolest projects we started on, because whoever thinks about large spaces like these and how they can be turned into housing. All throughout the city, this is possible. It doesn't need to be unique in College Hill. I began my career in the neighborhood of Sedamsville, just on the lower west side of Cincinnati. And I think about my time in College Hill through this angle of Sedamsville. If we can't help neighborhoods like Sedamsville, and we're only helping neighborhoods like College Hill, we are failing as a city, which is why I wanted to join the City Council, because there are 52 neighborhoods, and if they're all thriving, to Councilmember Harris's point, our city is going to be growing. Our city's going to be a city that we can all take pride in being part of and wanting to stay here for the future. So I'm honored to be part of this council. This council's really put that forward. They're putting their money where their mouth is, and that's the work that we got to continue to do. Thank you all.
Well, good afternoon. I am Councilman Scotty Johnson, and I am the Chair of Safety and Governance Committee for the city of Cincinnati. It is great to be here. Thanks to BMI and Cincinnati State for having us here this afternoon. But it's also, let me say this, it's great to be on a college campus, because on a college campus, you are the future, and you're the real thinkers. College students think outside the box, and the creativity is what continues to make this country, this state, and this city continuously move. And we need that. We need the new think, the new thought process that sometime we get stuck in as elders and seniors. But having said that, though, it's already been said, we want to continue as a council to make sure that Cincinnati keeps moving forward and thriving. We want to make sure Cincinnati grows without displacement, and we want to make sure Cincinnati grows, and in its growth, it includes everybody having an opportunity at the table. I spent 33 years as a Cincinnati police officer, so I do understand the dynamics of youth and law enforcement. I understand that sometime there's a disconnect, but I do believe here in Cincinnati, we've gone above and beyond to make sure that the connectivity between the citizens of Cincinnati and the Cincinnati Police Department has gotten a lot stronger over the years. So once again, it is an awesome privilege to be here this afternoon. Thank you for having us, and I look forward to the conversation that's to come. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilman Mark Jeffries. Similar to a lot of my colleagues, first time elected to council two years ago. First, I want to thank you Cincinnati State, BMI, for organizing this forum. Similar to what Councilman Johnson just said, it is great to be on a college campus. This reminds me of my personal story. My dad's an immigrant, came to this country without a dime in his pocket. That's what I grew up as, going to public schools, was a janitor, worked my way through college with a union job. I think that's the story of a lot of the kids who go to school these days, working, trying to make ends meet. And I later went on to business school in Procter &amp; Gamble, and then decided to run for office a couple of years ago. So my focus is what I call safer, cleaner, greener. Within that, pedestrian safety, but everything begins with safety, right? I'm honored to serve with Councilman, the Chair, Johnson, on his committee as well. If people aren't safe getting places, then nothing else really matters, right? So we have to continue to prioritize that. As I said, within that, a big focus of mine is pedestrian safety. It is by far the number one issue in every survey in every neighborhood in this town. We're doing, we're making progress. Last year, we had the fewest pedestrian vehicle crashes behind a number of initiatives and investments that we made. You see it, actually, right over here on Ludlow, the speed humps and things of that nature. So we are making progress there, but a lot more to be done. The clean, we have some of the most unclean air in some neighborhoods. We have lead pipes. We have an old city, lead pipes, lead paint, things we have to get out of our community that causes asthma to be four times higher in some neighborhoods than others. And on the green, we have to continue to invest in metro. Big proponent of that. I'm an avid cyclist, as many people may know. You see me going around town. But alternative modes of transportation, 30% of our city does not own a car. We have to build that more robust public transit, more robust active transportation, in order to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to thrive in their neighborhood. So appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you again, and look forward to the questions.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jeff Kramer Dean. I'm the Chair of the Housing and Eco Development Committee, and I'm also finishing up my first term on City Council. So it's great to be here with Dr. Posey, faculty, staff, and students. During my day job, I represent the faculty at the University of Cincinnati, the AUP, so I spend a lot of time on campuses. So it's an honor to be here, and I sincerely appreciate it. As my colleague, Councilmember Harris, said, I am very passionate about the city's budget, my work, my path to City Council. I began in my neighborhood, Price Cell, doing more and more work in Price Cell, and that led to other civic endeavors, including working with parks and recreation. And I just discovered that our parks and recreation cities and our roads were in terrible shape. And I did some research and discovered that we were about 400, we had about $400 million in failing infrastructure in the city. And then I discovered that that problem is related to our operating budget deficit. Our operating budget was unbalanced by about $25 million, and we were taking capital dollars and putting them in our operating budget, which is the reason our parks and recreation centers were in such, were in such terrible shape. And I talked to councilmembers at the time about this problem and said, it's not sustainable. The city's crumbling beneath you. And I did not receive the responses that I thought were necessary, and I decided to run for council. So this council, my colleagues have made some tough decisions. We've made critical steps to fixing our budget, but difficult decisions remain. The next two years are going to be much harder, and so we make these decisions about how to balance our budget and how to fix this $500 million in failing infrastructure. So the next two years will be critically important. It's been great to work with my colleagues. Our priorities, and I know that Anna Albi shares these, and it's reflected in our committee structure. It is green infrastructure and preparing for climate change. It is housing and growing the cities, and it is complete and safe streets. So that's our priorities. A balanced budget is the foundation for all of that and for the city we want to be in the next century. So thank you again. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today. And I'm going to state my apologies early. I do have a hard, I have to leave at 1:00. It is my fault, not, no offense meant. My name is Anna Albi. I am running for Cincinnati City Council. And the reason I'm running for Cincinnati City Council, I come from a gun violence prevention background. And frankly, when it comes to community safety, our state government is falling down on the job. And to give you a very specific example, for years at the state level, there's been proposed, a proposed bill that would require secure firearm storage, specifically when there are kids in the home. And yet, for years, that bill and any other type of gun safety legislation has been completely rejected in favor of a guns everywhere agenda at the state level. Arming teachers, permitless carry, shoot first bills, all the worst. And the impact of that is, in my community of Madisonville, last October, a three-year-old was shot and killed when a gun was left out where it was accessible in the home to children. A complete tragedy, an avoidable tragedy. The next day, I called up the Hamilton County Sheriff's Department, and over the course of the following week, we distributed 100 gun locks into the community, along with information around secure firearm storage. Three months after that, I had the honor and the privilege to stand with this City Council and the mayor as we introduced two gun safety ordinances here in Cincinnati. The first one requiring secure firearm storage, and the second one preventing those convicted of domestic violence from owning or using a firearm. And I'm happy and proud to say those two were upheld in the court by Judge Jennifer Branch, and you all should clap for that, because that's a very big deal, very big deal here in Ohio. I'm running for Cincinnati City Council to continue that work. I come from a family dedicated to service. My father is a former police officer and small business owner who owned a business here and served the community for 41 years. My mom's a retired public defender. My two brothers served in the United States military and are now lawyers for the federal government. Serving the community is why I am running for council, because I promise to show up, listen, learn, and do the work to make the community safer for everyone. And for me, community safety means making sure folks are paid living wages so they can afford a roof over their head, fresh food on the table, access to healthcare, which includes reproductive care and mental health care, and making sure that we are investing into our community programs and youth programs to make sure every kid has somewhere safe to go home at night. And that is the work I want to do in Cincinnati City Council. So thank you all for being here today. You can look me up at Albi, A-L-B-I, for Cincinnati.com. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vice Mayor J. Michelle Lemon Kearney. Dr. Monica Posey, thank you so much for having us. Professor Anderson, just so excited. I mean, it's been so long, and I can't believe you've been here 20 years. Like, oh, my goodness. I've known him, you know, his whole family. So just really excited to see you. So everybody, students, I'm just, I'm really excited to be here. Let me just tell you a little bit about me. So I was born in Cincinnati. I grew up in Avondale. I went to Cincinnati Public Schools. I went to Rockdale Elementary, Wana Hills High School, went on to Dartmouth College, and then Harvard Law School. I was in the class with President Barack Obama. And so that was really exciting to see somebody who's a classmate and friend become President of the United States. So look around, because you might be sitting next to the next president. You just never know, right? And you know what? Look at yourself, because it just might be you. And so, and I've taken classes here at Cincinnati State, so I'm really proud of the work that Cincinnati State does. I have been really not so much in the political arena. I did work on Barack's campaign. My husband was in the Ohio Senate. I worked on his campaign, and my feeling about politicians was, you all are crazy. Like, who would actually want to do this, right? And so I, you know, besides being an attorney, I'm a Realtor. I took real estate classes here. That's actually what I took here. And I'm an entrepreneur. I own the Cincinnati Herald Newspaper. So for decades, that's what I was doing. I was running a business. I was being a mom, you know, going about life. And then one day, someone said, will you step in and fill a seat on Cincinnati City Council, because somebody was leaving. And so, long story, which I don't have time to go into, but I ended up surprisingly saying, okay, not thinking I would really get chosen, and then I was chosen. So two weeks later, I'm being sworn in. It was March of 2020, and everything was closing down. City Hall closed. Everything was closed for COVID. And, you know, the city manager at the time, Mr. Dehaney, said, usually we have orientation, we do training, you meet everybody, but you know what? We're closed, so here's the key to your office. Good luck. And I was like, what? What am I going to do? But a few months later, George Floyd was murdered, and, you know, the city exploded. So the entire time that I started, there was so much going on. There was so much need. And so I really hit the ground running and just, you know, had a lot of help, a lot of support. In 2021, I ran for office and was elected. And in 2022, when this term started, I was appointed Vice Mayor. And so I've been working with some really fantastic council people and outside of council with Anna, because Anna is not on council yet, but she's been working with City Council on gun violence. She talked about the two laws that we passed. Just so you know, in Ohio, there's a preemption law, which means only the state and federal government can make gun regulation laws, not the city. But we got so upset about all of the gun violence, and Anna, working with Moms Demand Action, said, you guys need to pass a safe storage law, and also a law that says if you have a domestic violence conviction, you cannot own a gun. And so she pushed us, and we said, well, we'll probably get sued for this. But we passed these laws, and yes, we got sued, but as Anna said, we won. And so I give her so much credit for her leadership. We've also been working on things like community engagement. When I first got on council, no one really asked, what does the community say? We're going to bring this development into Evanston. What does the Evanston Community Council think about that? What do the Evanston residents want? And so that's an ordinance that I passed, and now we have an Office of Planning and Community Engagement, hired two new people who are now, as we speak, going around the city, meeting with different groups, talking about a community engagement policy with the city, all the boards, all the commissions. And I think the whole culture has changed. Another thing is affordable housing, and I give Reggie Harris a lot of credit for that. He was head of the Equitable Housing Committee, and now Jeff Kramer Dean has, looking to see where they are, has taken over that committee. But we have $112 million reserved for affordable housing projects. It's in what we call the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of Funds, because it's several different funds. And so we, this council has done more to increase affordable housing in the city than any other council. We still have a lot of work to do, don't get me wrong, but this council is really moving forward. And so I'm very proud of that work. Gun violence, you know, is really a difficult thing, and so I'm really thankful for the work we've done there. Another thing is equitable development. We really want our residents to have economic opportunity, especially our black-owned and women-owned businesses. And so Victoria Parks, who's not here now, and I worked on an equitable development policy, which says, like, we have this $200 million convention center project coming up, renovation. Well, if you're a small company, you probably cannot do, like, if you're a painting company, you can't paint the entire convention center, but we can give you a piece of that. So what we've said is, let's take these big projects and divide them up into smaller projects so that our small businesses, our black-owned, our women-owned businesses get a chance. We've also done things like put in place access to capital, because a lot of these small businesses just don't have the cash flow, where they can wait forever to get paid on a large project. And so they need access to capital. Bonding is another big issue. to capital. Bonding is, is another big issue. First-time bonding is really difficult, and you can't get these jobs if you're not bonded. And so our development expert, Seth Walsh, is working on bonding for us, and we're really excited about that. And so who haven't I mentioned? So you, you all know Mark Jeffries, pedestrian safety. I just want to, you know, I'm so proud of this council, right? So all of us work together. We don't all agree on everything, but we all, we all support each other. I want to give a shout out to Mark Jeffries. Later, we have a, a meeting in, in Price Hill to talk about pedestrian safety. But he's really, I have to just applaud you for that, because while we've talked about pedestrian safety, Mark has gotten, Mark Jeffries has gotten out there to see, like, here's what we can actually do about it. He's put it in action. So every time you go down the street and you're going over a speed bump, or you see a bump out, something that's slowing down traffic or a bike lane, think about Mark Jeffries. Okay? And then Scotty Johnson, you know, just someone I love so much. I mean, he is, you know, he was a police officer 33 years, and he, he has our, our Public Safety Committee. But what I really love about Scotty is he really pushes for equity. His thing is, you know, we're not going to do anything unless it has to do with equity. And he wants, he, he fights for the black community and, and really for everybody. So I, just to say, I am so proud of, of the council that I'm serving with and a new council member that I, that I'm hoping to serve with. These are just phenomenal people. And I'm, I want to apologize for having to leave, because I have to go to the County Commission, so that's why I'm taking longer to talk, because I already know I've gone over two minutes. Dr. Posey hasn't given me the cutoff sign, so I thought, okay, I guess it's, oh, hashtag, okay, okay. Sorry. Okay. Well, I just want to say it's an honor to be here. Call me anytime. All of us would love to talk to you guys. And just remember, here's a quote from Muhammad Ali, heavyweight boxing champion, "If your dreams don't scare you, they're not big enough." So dream, big dreams. You can make them happen. Thank you.
Good afternoon, distinguished guests, running councilmen, faculty, staff, and leadership. My name is Japi Cor, and I serve as the president for the student government for the past two years. I am also a nursing major, and I graduate my nursing degree this semester. So the light at the end of the tunnel is right there. Thank you so very much for all of you to be here. The opening statements were two minutes, but just to reiterate, the following questions are going to be 60 seconds each. Do keep in mind that these questions are all student-based. They have been derived from the students of Cincinnati State. And just to be mindful of all the candidates, 60 seconds is the time. DeGibro Thiam, who is the president of BMI, right up there in the front, has the paddle, and he will raise it really high up in the air and will give you the 10-second mark. And after the 10 seconds, I will go ahead and thank you to move on to the next candidate. Again, thank you all so much for being here. We're going to move on with our first question. Do you support Issue 22's proposed sale of the railroad to better support city infrastructure and basic services? Why or why not? If a question is needed to be repeated, you can just ask, and I will be sure to repeat that. We will go ahead and start with whoever wants to go first. I'll need their hands.
Yes, I absolutely support Issue 22, the sale of Cincinnati's railroad. Our railroad is an asset. We are essentially shifting the nature of an asset. We are not getting rid of it, but we're turning it into a physical asset, into one that is a monetary asset. We have a $500 million deferred maintenance deficit that needs to be filled. We have to take many steps to do it. And the increased revenue that we would get from the strategic and smart investment of $1.6 billion is a necessary and critical step to us getting there. We have state laws, the Ferguson Act, and we have city laws. Is that, that 60 seconds? Dang. Okay. Yes, I support it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're all just going to take a piece of this? Yes, I do support it. I think it boils back to why does Cincinnati own a railway? In the 1880s, we were trying to capture the economic development as we were repairing the nation after the Civil War. And we decided, why wait for someone to choose us? Let's build our own railway. Now, 150 years later, this railway exists to create money for our capital budget. This is an opportunity to enhance that and actually almost double. I know the years to come, triple and quadruple the amount of revenue that'll come in. It is in the line with why we created the railway in the first place, which is an innovative thinking to create more revenue and opportunities for the city of Cincinnati. Let's continue that trend going forward.
Well, I'm the Lone Ranger on this one. I do not support the sale of the railroad, because here's the main reason why. We have to make sure that equity is going into everything we do here in the city of Cincinnati. And we cannot reduce equity to wreck centers and pave roads. We have to make sure that economic development is going into the least of these communities. And that is why myself and the vice mayor are working on legislation right now to make sure that the 15 most underserved communities in the city of Cincinnati will benefit with economic development from the sale of the railroad. So right now, that is not in place. And the sale of the railroad would not, I mean, there will be, there should be more money available to assist, but I want to make sure that economic development goes into the 15 most underserved communities in the city. Thank you very much.
Before I get started, don't you love the vice mayor? I'm sorry. She's just an amazing person. Anyway, I couldn't resist. Now my time starts. Yes, I do. Let me tell you why. This is a financial decision. It's a more, better, better financial decision with safeguards. Currently, we have $25 million. With the sale of it, the assumption is we're going to get a 5.5% return. We get a 7.7% return on our pension, which is more, and that's fairly conservative. That is $86 million a year. Give me 86 million or 25 million? It is a choice of sell or lease, period. The safeguards on the state level, it has to be our current infrastructure, state law and city law, period. We can't spend it on an arena or some other thing. Current infrastructure, that's the safeguard. The other safeguard is, we can never pull it down to zero, period. It has, by the state law, it, if it ever goes below 25% of the principal, we can't take a dime out. So right financial decision, right safeguards.
Yes, I do support the sale for two reasons, and I'll be brief. One, the price is right. Number two, that money's lockbox. It'll be there for you, your children, and your children's children. And the lockbox was not put in place by council, but importantly, it was put in place by the Republican State Legislature. I'm a Democrat. I'm not a fan of the Republican State Legislature, but in this case, what they did was right. So that the, the sale money will be preserved in perpetuity. We'll just be able to use the infrastructure, as we've been doing for the past 100-plus years.
I'm going to be grateful it tries to do this, because I'm the shortest, and it was too short for me.
Right? See? Yeah. Okay. Everyone can still hear? Cool. I'm sure the AV people are appreciative. I do support the sale of the railroad. You know, you've heard various details about the actual law, the bill, how it's proposed. You can go online and research that. But to give you one very specific example of a project it would go into, is in my community of Madisonville, our fire station was built for horse and buggy. That means a modern-day equipment cannot fit into our building. And I'm going to tell you, I don't want to have my house on fire when I realize that I don't have the latest and greatest, you know, equipment for my fire station to actually serve me. So when we talk about where these funds go and the impact they're going to make on our community, it's investing into things such as fire station, police stations, health centers, making sure that the viaduct isn't crumbling as you cross it, right? These are everyday necessities. To me, it's the basics of what a city does, which is provide infrastructure. So I'm fully in support. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Now, moving on to the next question. Cincinnati State students are concerned with racial tension in the city. This is a two-part question, the first being, what would you do to bridge those divisions? And what is your plan to incorporate growing minority communities, communities such as the Latinx community, the LGBT community, other ethnic minority communities, and so forth? So again, to reiterate, how to bridge the gap and how to incorporate minority communities.
Is it all right? Or they said... Sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to throw off the system there. Yeah, no, I, I go back to, to my experience in Price Hill. I'm very proud of my experience in Price Hill. I was a founding member of Price Hill. Well, our goal's always been to have a mixed-income community, which we are, but continue to work towards that. And it's certainly one of the most diverse communities with a large and growing Latino population. That Price Hill has worked to incorporate with programs like the My Cincinnati Youth Orchestra, which is, you know, disadvantaged primarily Latino kids, which once you get the kids in, you get the parents in. So I'm very proud of the work that Price Hill has done. I think it's a great model that can be built upon as a city for building just an inclusive, inclusive, mixed-income, diverse neighborhoods.
What I'd say is two things. One, I think, for, first, for elected officials, I think we need to listen. Part of the role somebody said to me of elected officials is convening people. I think that is part of our job, is convening people. And I think we need to convene the right people. The second is, I think, how we grow as a city. I think a lot of times, we're, we're a very segregated city, and even in our housing policy. So one of the, as we look to reform housing, as we are now, that's one of the things that we need to do. We just passed what we, what I put forward, and everyone supported, the legalization of what are called accessory dwelling units. So ADUs, the ability to build out a garage, a third floor, or something, to enable more people to rent. Things of that nature bring different folks together, because it makes housing more affordable. So I think we need to make housing more affordable. The more we make it affordable, the more it will create opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't remember the full question, but I think I got the gist of it. So here's what I'll say. So in my community of Madisonville, this is a topic that comes up a lot. For those who aren't familiar with the history of Madisonville, it was settled by freed men and women. And we had a historically black community called the Dunbar Community that was bulldozed by the city in the 1970s. And now it's where the Red, Red Bank Expressway is. So these, this pain is very visceral and very real in my community, and this is a conversation we're constantly having. So I think, you know, one piece of this is having the conversation. Again, we in Madisonville talk a lot about how we can come together to communicate, to work together towards shared goals and values. From a city perspective, not only is there the communication part, which I think is vital, but it's also putting our money where our mouths are. You've heard a lot already, thanks to the vice mayor and council member Scotty Johnson, about, you know, how the city is investing into minority-owned, women-owned businesses, how we're investing into housing. And I think that's how you all can hold us accountable. The budget is a reflection of our values. So every year, you can look at the budget and see exactly how this council's investing. And I'm proud that the council has been doing the work. Thank you.
First and foremost, before you can address an issue, you have to admit there's a problem. This country has done a pitiful job admitting that we still have racial tension and divide. That is why it's always important, and it's pleasing to be on a college campus where young people, I've got hope, because I see a difference from my generation to your generation. So to be quite honest, you're the key to helping to dissolve some of this racial tension. You're the key, because you're a lot more inclusive than my generation ever thought about being. You're the key to this, and I believe that we are heading in the right direction when it comes to having honest dialogue and admitting that racial tension and the racial divide in this country still exists. What can we do as a city? We can continue to make sure we're admitting there's an issue and addressing that issue head-on, not ducking and dodging the difficult questions. And race has always been difficult in America. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a big part of why I wanted to come to city council. You look around the city, and to council member Johnson's point, you can see where the historic racial inequalities have existed. Just down the street here in Winston Hills, the city's invested $0 in the last five years in our own public money through the budget. You can look at that. You can see that. That's a problem. And they're not the only neighborhoods that we've left behind. And so these tensions exist because we've just forgotten neighborhoods for one reason or another. This council's committed to not letting that be the, the norm any longer and not be how it goes forward. I wanted to bring my experience from College Hill and how we were able to keep the community that was there in the first place to be part of the success that happened. Because so often, development becomes a negative word. It means that we're going to move you out, but there's going to be a gorgeous new community in your place. That doesn't need to be the case. That shouldn't be the place in the city of Cincinnati. Everyone who's here now should still be here as we see the success, but we should be investing to ensure that every neighborhood can help their visions become life.
Yeah, this is a, this is a big question. But so I, I kind of want to put a fine point on everything that my colleagues have said, because that what has guided our governance is this very question. So talk about admitting. First time the city, from an administrative perspective, has admitted, under the leadership of council member Johnson and the vice mayor, our role in the destruction of black communities, and then subsequent investment of $2 million for choice in the West End, some, you know, dollars for housing development in the West End. So it's both the admitting and then also the dollars. It is, for the first time, having ordinances that both provide for capacity building and pipeline building for minority business enterprises with a real focus there. My office led and held the first Black Developers Conference to increase the capacity and pipeline. And so the work has been focused around this very issue.
Thank you, candidates. I would like to point out, I remember hearing you guys talk about active listening and changing the norm and inviting the new change. And I think you being here is listening to the community, and that, that amounts to something. And I just wanted to say, we all appreciate it. Our students appreciate you showing up and actually listening to what the students have to say. Moving on to the next question, this is going to circle back to what we've been talking about, the housing crisis. Do you think Issue 24 should be passed? And follow-up to that, what do you plan to do to help solve the housing crisis in Cincinnati?
60 seconds on this issue. Should be 60 hours. So the short answer is no. But here's why. We have built the system under Councilman Harris's leadership of the Cincinnati Development Fund. We, as the vice mayor said, we have over $112 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In the last year, we've built over 1,000 units that are affordable below 80%. That is more, and Councilman Harris will have this, than, than combined the previous five years that we've ever developed. So we have a system in place now. We funded, we just funded another $5 million to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We have a system that is working. We just need to fund it more, not necessarily develop a parallel system that will complicate it and not yield as many results. Thank you.
Sure. The, the short answer is no. And here's why. Council member Jeffries laid it out. We develop a system, and the system is working. This new amendment would be duplicative, so it would add barriers. And we talked about earlier how barriers inhibit building units and, you know, bringing down rent. Between 2017 and 2021, we only built in this city 59 units of housing of 40 new people at the very, very lowest income. The past year, this council, we funded 125 units. We've tripled the number of units that we did in five years in one year. That's working. We need to continue to invest. We have a sustainable revenue source that we will continue to build. And then we have to also solve not only housing, but our deferred maintenance, our pension, our operating budget deficit. So we have lots of issues that we have to solve. And so it doesn't mean much to have a really great new housing apartment built with the sinkhole in front of the, the front door.
I don't believe Issue 24 solves the problem. We are working diligently, as it's already been stated. We got $112 million in the Housing Trust Fund. We have to continue on that road, and we have to continue to make sure that adequate funding is available for housing. I don't, then in addition to the work that's already been done, as Mr. Harris put it, we don't need to duplicate services and cause roadblocks for productivity. And then in addition to that, there are a lot of unanswered questions on Issue 24. Who would control the funding? Who would allocate the funding? Where would that all be allocated? And those are a lot of the questions that are unanswered. So to say, right now, I don't do, I do not believe Issue 24 addresses the housing issue.
So to repeat everything they just said, all those wonderful numbers, and that I do not support Issue 24, but I also just want to take a moment to talk about how we keep people in their current house. Because this is something that comes up when I'm talking to folks in communities, when I'm knocking doors, right? Rising property taxes. So property taxes are set by the state. So I'm really excited, Representative
Representative Donnie Isaacson has a bill right now proposed that would freeze property taxes for senior citizens. That's a great bill. We should do all that we can here to support that bill and ask our state representatives to pass that. When it comes to paying taxes, the Treasurers Office has a payment plan process. So if someone is struggling to pay their property taxes, they can go into a payment plan. The Auditor's Office can help you with the homestead exemption. We have these tools, but what can we as a city do to bring the tools, these resources to our people? So I think that is a key part that is getting maybe not enough attention in this conversation is how do we keep people in their house? And then because Councilmember Mika Owens is not here, I'm going to mention the Tenants' Bill of Rights, which is all about helping tenants stay in their building with rent assistance and going after bad faith landlords. So there are a lot of tools the city is supporting that will help keep people stay in their house as well.
I've built affordable housing. I know how difficult it is to build affordable housing out here. What everyone's talked about is the right step in terms of how we get financing into the city of Cincinnati. But it's also a misnomer that's being said for Issue 24, which is that money is going to solve this problem. It's, it's just not. The reality that we face with affordable housing is all these barriers that have been created by, through generations that make it impossible to build the affordable housing we need to build and the density we need to build throughout the city of Cincinnati. Things like connected communities, where we're going to revise our zoning code to allow affordable housing and true housing to be built again in the city of Cincinnati are the key next step. Tackling the fact that, and again, I just came from a ground ribbon cutting this morning of 14 units of affordable housing built in College Hill. That project, there was not a single project I did in College Hill that didn't have the city negatively impacting it in some way. We got to fix that. The money part has been solved. We have to find the ways to actually now get the money out the door because this, it's a misnomer to think that this will solve the problem.
So by way of a conclusion, one, first, I do oppose the Issue 24. One, we have done tremendous things. Two, the city faces tremendous challenges. We have to solve them all together when it comes to the operating budget, infrastructure, pension and housing. And I just have faith in this. My answer would be very different, but I do have faith in this group of people behind me, that this is a group of people that is willing to take, make the tough decisions that will be made over the next two years.
Thank you, candidates. Moving on to the next question. This is also one of the big concern for Cincinnati State students. There are a lot of disparities that exist for citizens with disabilities in Cincinnati. Of particular interest are questions about accessibility. How do you plan to address these concerns? And how do you plan to increase accessibility for all differently abled citizens? Accessibility being linguistic accessibility, transportation, food and so forth.
I think I just got drafted on this one. We actually, so one of the cool things about these forums is that we hear these questions and we are able to kind of start bouncing ideas off as we go through it. At this point, we could probably do each of our own stump speeches. I think we should do that probably for the next forum, guys. But one, we had a Lads Disability Summit. And the conversation that came from there was a lot of this conversation about how we can start making, using the city processes that already exist to push forward on how we can make the city more accessible. For me, the area that I pointed out is that the city, when you're doing a design and you're building, there's a, the groups all come together, all the various departments to evaluate and give you just some initial feedback. And one of the things that we don't have them pushing for on historic preservation buildings on these is how can we make them a little bit more accessible? How do we start thinking in the front end about accessibility? And the city, and that's the easy policy that we can start moving forward on. So that's one answer. And I think everyone's probably going to jump on there from what their takes were.
Thank you.
You throw out a big number, like 500 million failing infrastructure seems like a number, but when you take a tour and look at the infrastructure, you see the impact on citizens, which we as a council did. And one of the things we see is impediments to accessibility. Because of the failing infrastructure, people can't access it. I was just down at Yatman's Cove, a beautiful water park that's been down there for years. There was an elevator, so people in a wheelchair, they're just going to get on the elevator and be able to access the spray ground. That elevator is barricaded. People can't access the spray ground. Unfortunately, we're seeing that all over the city of Cincinnati. That's why this is such a crisis.
So funny enough, the issue that got me first involved with Madisonville Community Council were the sidewalks in our community, which is a whole can of worms that I'm not going to go into. But, you know, obviously, when we think about accessibility, we think about physical spaces around us. In addition to that, you know, I think one of the topics that doesn't come up enough is accessibility to education, job training and jobs ultimately. So I think the city can play a key role in working with educational institutions to talk about how do we set, you know, have curated curriculum and whatever else is needed to help those who are, you know, either physically disabled or have other neurodiverse needs. So we can adapt our curriculums for that. And then how do we work harder to match them with jobs after, after college, after education? And being a lot more proactive in that and thinking about accessibility from that perspective as well. Thank you.
So accessibility issues have been a couple that I've been working on, especially relative to pedestrian safety. So passed a motion for the administration to review their policy on a few things. One, we changed our policy on closing sidewalks during construction, which ruled people out, especially folks who are in wheelchairs. It's a big issue if you go out into the street. So that is now prohibited. The other one is, as we're changing out lights, what's called the peg button, you hit the peg button, we want to install new ones every time we are installing a new light. The third is working to make sure that the ramps don't go into the middle of the street. Currently, a lot of the ramps go into the middle of the street. We said no, they need to be front and center and with tactile functions to make sure that people, as they're crossing, can. The last is working with Metro on, as they're buying new buses, to have audible signals for people. So as people are going on Metro, if they're visually impaired, they have the ability to hear when the next stop is.
You know, it's, thank you, Mr. Jeffries has made it clear that there are a lot of things that we're doing. But first and foremost, we have to recognize that everybody in this room is dealing with a disability. Some are visible, some are not as visible. But when we legislate with compassion and care, then therefore those that, those that are dealing with disability and limited access will always be considered. So I believe I'm working with the group of people that always want to legislate with compassion and to make sure that everybody is at the table and is heard. As the president said, as the student body president said, when we listen and we hear, when we take the time to listen, then therefore we will be able to address the concerns of everybody. So legislating with compassion does, is part of the solution.
Yeah, and I would just round off. I think Councilmember Jeffries did a great job outlining some of the work that we've done. But the reality for any of these questions is that the city has two things we can do. We can offer a stick or we can offer a carrot. A stick is being able to fine or punish bad faith actors or actors that don't comply. Or we can offer incentives. We go the route of offering incentives because we typically get better results. And so when you look at our residential tax abatement reform, we actually provided more incentives for people to do, renovate homes with accessibility components. We're reviewing our commercial tax abatement reform, if we're lucky enough to be elected in January, and then we can look there for incentives for new development and redevelopment to allow for greater accessibility.
Thank you. I do want to mention a big thanks for the councilmen for working with Metro in travel accessibility. I got a free pass to Metro. It was one of the best things ever, and I'm sure most students over here can agree for the same as well. Moving on to the next question. How do you understand the role that Cincinnati State plays in the community and how will you support Cincinnati State at City Hall?
Well, you know, Cincinnati State, and I use this term some, a lot of times on the, on the floor of council. Cincinnati State has definitely moved the needle when it comes to making sure that all, everybody that wants to advance and move forward in their career, in their personal lives, Cincinnati State has moved that needle in making sure that people know what they're doing. I also talk about sticking our chest out sometimes. Cincinnati State, and I know the humility of being Midwesterners, but Cincinnati State has done that in making sure everybody that wants an opportunity is provided an opportunity. Since City Council as a city, we will continue to make sure that we support Cincinnati State in every way, shape and form that we possibly can. But the fact that Cincinnati State has made it known that they're here and open for everybody, that has gone a long way. And you need to give yourselves a round of applause for what you've done in moving that needle, really.
Well, one, I'm glad that you asked that question. It is good to have a self-promoting question in there and that's a positive. So I would just say there's very one, one tangible way in which the importance of Cincinnati State has been demonstrated. And so, you know, almost a decade ago, well, almost a decade ago, the exit that connected the highway to Cincinnati State was closed, right? And so now we're working to reopen that, plus the connection of the bike lanes and all the pedestrian safety. The reason why I say that's important is because when you have an institution that is providing workforce development for the city, when you have an institution that has been invested in making sure folks can connect to all of the opportunities in the city, it is important for us to make sure that this institution is accessible as possible. So I just wanted to highlight a demonstrated way in which, as a city, folks being able to access Cincinnati State, connecting to sort of in bus passes, shows the value of this great institution.
Thank you.
When I was student by President Xavier University, I interned for a council member at the time, and he came out to Cincinnati State for a tour. I was 22, 23, however old I was at the time. And it really opened my eyes to the amazing work that happens here at Cincinnati State. A few months later, I moved on to McAlpin Avenue, where I still call home. Elliot sees me walking my dogs and pretend like we don't know each other. I appreciate that still. Good time to decompress. It is amazing, the institute that exists here, right here in Cincinnati. I mean, we talk about Xavier, we talk to the University of Cincinnati. Cincinnati State provides that same type of quality for the people in Cincinnati. I think of the culinary school. The culinary school provided some of the best chefs that came to College Hill, were able, opening businesses and helping. There was a bar owner right before the pandemic who decided he didn't want to run a bar anymore. But he still owned a building and had a kitchen, and he wanted to become a chef. So he started coming here for culinary. That's amazing that you can do that right here in Cincinnati. So continuing to work together, I think, is important and not completely ignoring Elliot when we're walking our dogs.
All right, Seth just took my culinary example, but no, I would say Cincinnati State is, and I'm not saying this to butter up, it is a real gem. Because I think as a city, we need multiple institutions, right? We have University of Cincinnati, we have Xavier, we have Cincinnati State. And to be somebody who wants to be a nurse, for example, or yes, the Midwest Culinary Institute, it's not just the culinary institute, it's the Midwest. And I think that is, that in particular is such a gem in the city for people who, you know, want to pursue a different path, who want to become a chef, a pastry chef, or, you know, whatever type of chef. And I think we should celebrate that and promote it. So I think the role that we can, in addition to, you know, just talking about it here, is continue to elevate it in our circles, elevate the work that, the opportunity that is in Cincinnati State and on social media and other platforms. I think that's certainly something that we can do and need to do to continue to be supportive.
Thank you.
Cincinnati State is a nationally recognized institution. We're so fortunate to have Cincinnati State here. This council, it, we all believe in growing equitably, in growing the city. And when it comes to growing the city, we're talking about younger people. You know, people that are 65 or 70 are not going to move to the city of Cincinnati. So it's attracting and retaining young people and having a great experience when they're here at Cincinnati State that's critical so that people can live where they want to live. They can live close to a business district, they can walk to a business district, they can walk or bicycle to Cincinnati State if they choose. So having that world-class experience while students are here at Cincinnati State is critical to growing the city like we want to.
They say the biggest investment a country can make is in its youth and in its students. So thank you, candidates and councilmen, for recognizing that, for recognizing Cincinnati State as the educational institute that propels that forward. Moving on to the next question, this is directly and directed to the Cincinnati State students. What do you have to say to Cincinnati State students about their future? What can they look forward to?
Wow. The sky's the limit, and that's, that's not a, that's just not a, something you throw out there. I really do believe, and I said it earlier in one of the questions, this generation has such an amazing opportunity to move this country forward. We missed it. This generation blew it. And there are a lot of obstacles that were in place on why we blew it. And I'm not afraid to admit, we blew it. We didn't take advantage of coming together and moving together as one, trying to move this country forward. There was too much racism, there was too much, too many obstacles. There was a lot in the 60s that kept us from getting to where we needed to get. We've made amazing strides and we got more strides to make, but I believe it lies in this generation because you don't, you see, you see life from a different lens than we did. And you see life as not necessarily separated, but better together, stronger together. So I would say to the citizens of, I mean, yeah, the citizens and the students of Cincinnati State, you can make it happen. There's nothing that you can't accomplish, that you can't, that you are determined to persevere through and put your mind to. Don't be like my generation and miss it. Keep moving forward and you'll get it.
Oh my God, I love this question. Curiosity, truth, nuance and commitment. Remain curious. Curiosity is just vital to progress. It is vital to sanity and it is vital to good wellbeing to remain curious about the world. Truth, there are truths in the world. Sometimes they're not always recognizable, but that search for truth is really important. And in that search, recognizing that there's nuance to everything. Be very wary of people who are certain. Be very wary of people who are certain that they are right. And if you believe that you are right, and if you believe in something so deeply, then the onus is on you to prove that you are right. The onus is on you to prove that you are right through finding every argument that goes against what you are certain of.
All right, so I have four kids. One just graduated from college, two are in college and one's a senior at Walnut. What I would tell you is first, I am hugely inspired by this generation because they are involved. You know, we always, the older generation always complains about the new one. For me, as these guys know, my faith is very important. And there are two things that come to mind, kind of just building on Councilman Harris's, two phrases that relate to this. One, I think of is pray as if everything depends upon God, act as if everything depends upon you. I think about that often. The second is, it is not your job to complete the work, but it is also not your job to absolve yourself of working on it. There are so many problems, we cannot complete, solve all of them, but we need people engaged. And what we need is people engaged in solving those problems who are younger. The big challenge, the Vice Mayor talked about, community engagement. We need people at the table to help solve the problem. So be engaged, be involved, be a part of the dialogue because these decisions will be made without you, and we need your input and your guidance.
I'll date myself with this answer. I was in college in the 90s, right? When the Cold War ended and the Berlin Wall fell. And every day you'd read headlines about countries experiencing freedom and coming together. It was a decade of peace and prosperity that we thought would go on forever. And fast forward to this generation where we've seen... we thought would go on forever. And fast forward to this generation, where we've seen police brutality, Black Lives Matters, very divisive presidencies, at times, democracy in America questioned. So you are coming of age in a crucible. And I think that with these hard times, it's my hope that with these hard times, we'll produce incredible leaders who've come through tremendous adversity.
Did you just call me the student? Not quite, but thank you. This would be a great question to end on, with all these valedictorian speeches going on up here. Cincinnati is my home, not by birth, but by choice. I chose to stay here after, after that interning at City Hall. And I don't regret it because this is an amazing city. I was 24 when they hired me to be the executive director of the College Hill C U R C. I didn't know which way it was up. It took me several years to learn how to do financial statements, but I figured it out because the city's so amazing that if you're young and you're eager, and you have a dream and a vision, and you're willing to work hard and figure out what that means, you can make it happen. And not only that, but I think about the time in College Hill, with $85 million in redevelopment, people singing the praises. It began with a backyard barbecue with like three or four people in College Hill that just said, we think our community can be something special. And they made it happen. You don't see that often around this world. You don't see it around the country. You hear this council, the things they're talking about. I remember when I started here, bike lanes were unheard of. That was 10 years ago. Now they're everywhere. This future is so bright in the city of Cincinnati. And for this generation, if you step up and you own it, you can make Cincinnati not just a city for you, but the city for everyone to want to make the future.
Thank you, candidates and councilmen, so much for your words of encouragement. We all listen to them. It propels us forward to step into leadership, step into the limelight, and do our part of the work. Now I would like to move on to a new segment. This is something that we have not done before. We will be taking some student questions and questions from the crowd. Instead of the answer time being one minute, it will be 30 seconds each, so just kind of like a rapid fire, so we can try to get more people to ask questions. So whoever has a question, please go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll alternate between sections.
First, I just want to say thank you for taking your time to talk.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I just want to say thanks for taking the time out to speak today. My question is, Councilman Harris had an excellent point when he stepped to the mic for his first two minutes. What is one thing you would invest in to allow for growth in Cincinnati?
So it's actually, that's a great question. It's one of the reasons why I'm opposed to issue 24, the housing tax. I think that as we look to the future, and if we were to consider any income tax increase, it would be increasing investment in economic development. Right now, as a city, we don't spend a lot of money on economic development and our startup community and our growth community. We don't put a lot of money into housing deals. And when we're able to put money into projects, that we can ask more of organizations in terms of the city. And so for me, when we start to think about our budget of the future is increasing our investment in economic development.
Yes, absolutely, it'd be economic development. But I want to elaborate that when I say economic development, I think a lot of people think you're just making people richer. Economic development can come in so many ways. It can come through building new parks that then spur development. It can come through businesses and supporting businesses. It can come through housing. All that is so critical, and that is the answer for the city of Cincinnati, how we're going to get out of these budget situations we're facing, but also making this a city that people want to live in.
Thank you.
Multiple things, but if I had to pick one, because obviously workforce development is a big one, but I would say not just economic development, but down to the neighborhood level. We know CDCs, which are the neighborhood development organizations, huge return on investment. And what they're often supporting are small businesses. And we know that the vast majority of jobs that are created are with small businesses. So we have to invest in those. The return on investment is easily eight to one on most of those. You think about neighborhoods such as, you know, College Hill that Seth mentioned, but there are a lot of neighbors that don't have a CDC. So I think it's taking that model and bringing it to a lot of other neighborhoods to really make sure that they have the tools to grow organically themselves.
I was just going to respectfully turn the question back to you and to others in the audience, because you are the people we want to attract and retain. So as we move forward as a city and make tough decisions about investments, we need to hear from you about what you want your city to look like, how you want to invest money, what sort of amenities you want, what you want the city to look like. So it's important to continue to communicate with us as we move forward.
Thank you.
Afternoon. My name is Jordan. I work here for the C State Accelerator Program. Just had a quick question. Going back to issue 22, I read some information that said that with the railroad trying to be, trying to be sold, you know, we're basically selling a lifetime minority, and you know, with inflation eating it up, how does that look when the money runs out, I want to say about 100 years? How do we come back from that in the future as Cincinnati is, you know, given that the founders of the city, you know, set this out so we can set apart from every city in the nation?
So a little on the technical wonky side, the way this money is actually set up, the $1.6 billion will be locked away into a trust fund. And then it is the residuals from the return on that that will be coming back to the city and being reinvested into it. So that money will actually be growing and will not go away in 100 years. If done right, and to Councilmember Jeffrey's point, there's a state law that says we can't pull more than, that if it dips more than 25% of what it was the previous year, we cannot touch it until it rebuilds to what that previous year amount had been. So there are safeguards in place already to ensure that that money cannot be taken away, and is purely for the residuals that come off that from the investment returns, so that this becomes an asset long, long into the future, past 100-plus years.
Thing I would add to that is, this is a choice between sell and lease. Norfolk Southern already triggered the lease provision. So we, if we don't sell it, we have to lease it to them, period, for the next 25 years. The question is, at what rate? We would go to an arbiter, and an arbiter basically decides what rate we're going to get. We don't. We don't negotiate. We'll tell, say how much we want. Today, we're getting 25 million. Who knows what we're going to get from an arbiter? We do know if we sell it, we do know that a 5.5% return, which we've proven we can do on the pension, 7.7, is conservative. That's 86 million. So we do know that we could get 86 million, and we're living off just the return on it. We're not handling, we're not getting the principal. So it's a misnomer to say, go back and negotiate more. We wouldn't negotiate more. It would go to a arbiter, and we would, maybe we'll get, you know, 25, 30 million, who knows? But we're not going to get 86 million plus, which we know is a fairly conservative assumption. So it's a better financial decision with the right safeguards.
And my colleagues are right about that. But here's the thing that I hope, and I really do pray is true. Just as state law changed the law for us to be able to sell, state law could change again. State law could change again, and then that $1.6 billion that would help this city with the firehouses, with another police station. My prayer is that those legislators, as we attrit out and the state legislature changes out, are there safeguards in place that would prevent that from ever happening? No. Because just as we changed state law to get here, state law could change again. And I gotta make, I want to make sure that everybody, every community in this city benefits from this sale. Every community in this city is better as a result of that sale, this sale.
Due to time constraints, we will have to stop the questions for now, but we will move forward towards the closing statements. You all have two minutes each to give your closing statements, and we can start in whichever order you'd like.
I have very little to add. I think we've left it all out there. As you can tell, this is a group of people that, you know, we get along very well. That's not to mean that we don't fight. We have got very vehement disagreements, but we keep coming back to the same core issues, which is the reason that we are able to work well together, that when we fight, we keep coming back to the table. So that's the council that you have. So I appreciate all the questions. We've talked about a lot of very important issues, and it was an honor to be here.
Thank you again for hosting this. Thank you, Cincinnati State, as well. What I think you see here are council members who have different, and I hate the word lanes, but we focus on different issues. There's not a lot of drama. Like, you have a lot of drama in Congress on people, personalities, none of that. We have a lot of work to do, and we're not going to solve every problem, but I think the values that we, why we get along is because we have the same values in this city, and how we grow, and how we develop, and how we do it equitably. A lot of my focus is on what I, just quality of life issues. I think the things that you can feel and touch, what I call safer, cleaner, greener, the things that really matter to make sure that you can live a safe life. You can have, you can walk to the grocery store and make sure you don't get shot or hit by a car, that you can breathe clean air, you can drink clean water, that you can go to a park and enjoy it with your family. These are things that really matter, and frankly, it's the thing that I love about local government. It's not some far-off, you know, Congress. These are things that hit your day to day, and improving the general quality of life in the city is what excites me and why I want to continue to serve. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, Cincinnati State. Thank you to the students for being engaged. Stay engaged, young people. Stay engaged and make sure that your voices are heard, and we are listening. I will never, as a 33-year Cincinnati police officer retired, and now as a councilman, I will never cheat the citizens of Cincinnati. I will always make sure that I have done my research and my homework before I come to you with what, which, with what way I believe we should move as a city. I think there's a lot of amazing things happening in Cincinnati. I think Cincinnati is on the right track. And I don't say this often, but I trust these men and women that are now sitting on Cincinnati City Council. Because the one thing that's already been said, we do hold each other accountable. We don't have, I know it, I know there are people that have said that we don't trust, we don't challenge each other. Yes, we do. We hold each other accountable. And I would not stand before you and say that unless, unless that was the truth. And I want you, as citizens, to hold us accountable. You as citizens to keep pushing us because you matter. People matter. And I'm going to make sure, as long as I'm graced to sit on this council, I will make sure that people matter, and I will make sure that your voices are heard. So once again, Dr. Posey, thank you, Cincinnati State. This has been amazing. Greatly appreciate BMI also. Thank you very much.
Serving on city council this last year has been an honor of a lifetime. I appreciate being appointed to it. I appreciate having the opportunity to come today to speak to all of you, and I hope to have the opportunity to be real, to be elected, to serve a full term. This council is doing some really amazing work, but they're tackling really, really hard issues that can't be unwound in a day or a month. It took a while to get here, and it's going to take a while to fix them. But you can see this council is committed to it. You know, all the topics we've talked about, not a single one of them is easy, and if they were, they would have been solved by now. But we are working hard to make sure that from all of our collective experiences, we can make that happen. I'm confident from my experience in College Hill, where we kept the community's vision alive for 20-plus years to make it a reality. We can do that for all of Cincinnati, where everyone in the city is winning because we're seeing success. So thank you all for having us today. It's been an honor.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Posey, to the Blackmail Initiative, to student government for having us. I want to close on this, and I want to say, my ask in this closing statement is to implore everyone to reject the spirit of cynicism. Our national politics is toxic. There's lots going on in the world, but we have a real opportunity in our city right now. Government is actually really working. It's messy. You may not agree with everything, but it is working. And so my ask of you is to really tune in, not listen or read just the headlines of the Inquirer that says like, you know, everything's a mess, but come to council meetings, come to public comment, use that engagement, and you will see thoughtful, methodical, pragmatic legislation being proposed and passed. And though that it may not feel exciting, they may not feel like, oh, you know, we're just changing things, that is sustainable, lasting change. And I think that you would go to bed, and you would sleep decently, knowing that there is a group of people who are really making people-centered decisions. So yes, thank you for your time. Thank you for your engagement, and hope to earn your vote in November.
Thank you, candidates and councilmen. This event would not have been possible without the Blackmail Initiative, a student-based organization with the goal of leadership, empowerment, mentoring, and collaboration. I would like to move forward to thank you all and go forward with some acknowledgements. If you are mentioned and you are in this room, please raise your hand so you can be acknowledged. As we can observe around with this event, a lot of effort has been put in, and it would not be possible, starting out with the audiovisual program students under the instructor leadership of Jeff Winkleman and program chair Dave Killen. Moving on to the BMI or Blackmail Initiative advisor, Brian Dell, right up here. Would not have been possible without him. Admissions college recruiter and key Cincinnati State employees on this. I would also like to mention the student who actually originated the idea of coming up with the city council forum, who is actually an alum and a part of BMI, Christopher Johnson. It is to my understanding that he was or is here, but that was the student that came up with this idea last year, and that's how we moved forward with it. So acknowledgement.
So acknowledgements to him. Sonny Hill, who is the student government advisor, senior director of student success and development. Ted Kindle, institutional advancement and coordinator. Leadership of Dr. Posey and Elliot Ruther. Councilmen and campaign aides who helped bring candidates here. We really do appreciate that. This would not have been possible without your collaboration, and we give you our warmest thanks. I would also like to move forward to acknowledge some faculties. Chief Reed and Public Safety, Pam Ecker and Daily News, Richard Curtis for press release, Marketing Department, and other institutional advancement. Everyone who attended in person and online, and the IT department as well. Again, thank you so very much for coming, sharing your words of encouragement, making us more informed voters today. Thank you so very much. And a big round of applause for all the councilmen and candidates. Thank you.